You're front center, so I'll ask you to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We got just a little bit different format this morning, but we'll move forward. First of all, the invitation for any citizen that would like to schedule a time on an agenda that's not listed may do so at this time. I don't see any at this time. We will approve the agenda as mailed unless anyone has any additions or corrections that they would like on the agenda as such. Okay, without objection, we'll approve the agenda. Then, before I get to the consent agenda items and we move forward, I visited with Mr. Endries and he's on the agenda for 8:35. And as it turned out, he was, he's busy traveling and he said if I can get there at 8:35, then I can get in and out. And I said, "That would be great." Well, as it turned out, Rick is here, Rick Eggerbrack, on our Navita project update. So, Rick, if you want to come forward. Had an interesting conversation with Mr. Endries. The product they're using, they've had a huge test in a huge dairy. And it's interesting to find out that every cow is different. You don't, yeah, you got it in front of you. But the protein absorption ranged from, I think, like 140% increase in one particular pound, another one that was down to 17. And everybody, you know, the herd average is great. Yeah, it's right here, but it's interesting. Anyway, Rick, we'll let you give the update and then if any of the commissioners have any questions, we'll.
That sounds good. Thank you. Wanted to get together and have an opportunity to give you an update on our project. We've been intentionally quiet. We've had a lot of work to do. Our goal, of course, is, we all know, was to begin construction on the project spring of this year. We weren't able to do that just because of the fact that we needed to, our investors were asking us to go through a feeding trial so that we could prove out the results of our meal and to see how they would perform in dairy cows and what the, how the market would respond to pricing. So, we went through that effort and we had some very positive results. I wanted to show you first that the, uh, the plant location hasn't changed. We're still in the same spot. We, uh, we purchased the equipment from Valero earlier this summer and we hired Fagan Construction to, uh, to move the equipment from the current plant location. And we purchased the Sosa piece of land, which is the bottom triangle on the, uh, out of our whole section of property. We have the, uh, the quarter that was originally owned by, um, what was, um, Gilkerson, right? And we had an option with him, extended that option over to Mr. Dietrich, and now we have an option with Dietrich on that quarter. So, the plant is going to stay in the exact same location. It was going to be located at the intersection of 415th and 213th. So, at some point, we'll have to have conversations, uh, beginning again with Abigail Howard on the road use agreement and getting that language updated and with Mr. Burke. But Keith Brunsmann from our office has been in communication with the state and staying in touch with Hunter Roberts. So, uh, we've been keeping that dialogue going forward. So, I gave Commissioner Larson a couple packets if you could pass those around and everyone could take a look at it. So, again, uh, the plant location isn't changing. And you can see that we have, uh, we've met with the new railroad, by the way. Great people. We're, we're really like the way they think. Their level of service, the CP was a good railroad, but they're Class 1 railroad. And they aren't interested in every different move that's out there. Because some of them, they look at the big picture. They want to go from Midwest to the coast. But the G and W or the RC P and E, uh, they're more interested in picking up all those nickels, which we like, right? You get better service at your plant, hopefully better rates. Uh, they can get us to the UP over Mankato because they have baggage regged there or they can get us on the BN to, uh, the, to Florence or, or to Wolsey so we can get our product out to the coast. So, very good railroad. Have a very good.
Say, I was wondering, Jason, can you put the overhead or Stacy or somebody so that everybody else can see it?
Oh. Oh, you know what? I didn't even notice that. Right. So, anyway, on page two, it shows our initial rail layout where we're not going to complete the loop, but again, our plan is still to complete the loop. Uh, and that's the design on page three. But really, what I wanted to show you was that nothing has changed. We still plan on putting our, our, the trees up for the neighbors. Everything that we said that we were going to do a year ago, we're still planning on doing. Uh, we still moved the plant over as far as we could to the east. Uh, we're not changing anything there. Um, page four, you can just see that we moved, uh, like I said, we purchased all the equipment from Valero, had Fagan Construction out of Minnesota disassemble the plant and move it all over. Uh, we even used, uh, tell camps to move the oil tanks, which is a great, great way to use a local business. And it was also nice that we didn't have to cut up the tanks and then reassemble them over at the new site. On, uh, just on a quick update on the project. As I mentioned, you know, we purchased and moved the extraction equipment. Uh, and in May, as I mentioned earlier, we were asked by our potential investors to conduct some large-scale feeding trials. And I'll share some more details on that in a minute, but those, uh, those trials went very well. Uh, the, uh, inclusion rates of distillers grains are usually up to maybe 10%. Uh, with our meal, we're able to actually have an inclusion rate of somewhere between 15 and 20%. And, uh, we're able to extract a higher value for the product over distiller's grains as well. So, that's, uh, that boded very well for our business model. Our finance can, because the feeding trials went so well, we're able to, uh, you know, share with you our updated financing and construction goals. We plan to have our term sheet signed by the end of the third quarter of this year. Have our financial close completed by the end of this year. And begin construction in the spring of 2015. It'll take nine to 12 months to complete the project. And therefore, hopefully, have the plant up and running by spring of 2016. And, uh, as Commissioner Larson mentioned, with the feeding trials, the goals were to confirm the customer value proposition. We wanted to reduce the, see if we could reduce ration costs by displacing higher-priced protein supplements. And maintain or improve milk yield and quality. Determine the price, uh, this is important. Determine the price that the dairies will pay for the product. And verify that Nova meal has more value than distiller's grains. And just, uh, on page seven on the overview, uh, we, you can see we contracted with a large dairy in Cork in California. They have 2,000 lactating Holstein cows. We started the feeding trial in May and fed it for four weeks with different inclusion rates, three and a half, five and a half, and seven and a half pounds per head per day. And we fed 185 tons of the product. We displaced higher-priced $100-plus canola meal and sold Nova meal at $18 and $39 a ton over distiller's grains. So, by taking the oil from the distiller's grains, we're able to increase the amount of, or condense the amount of protein, which is very attractive to the dairy producers. So, performed very well. So, the good news is, we're still building, we're still planning on building the plant. We're still planning on building it in the same location. It just, uh, we had to go through some steps to satisfy investors.
I don't, I don't think there was ever, I never had a question as to the validity of your plant. My only question was how long we have to, to keep renewing our grant that we have sitting here. So, uh, you know, if, uh, you're saying spring of 2015?
That's right.
And that's carved in stone?
No, uh, but that's our goal.
Other questions for Rick? I visited with you some the other day and then I had a rather lengthy conversation with Mr. Endries and, uh, and obviously, you know, some of that was confidential information for the project. But, uh, I was impressed with, albeit it, you know, I guess was a third-party but private task. But it was interesting as he got into the detail of everything that they tested and how the nutritionist that was the third-party that done the work. And I knew these nutritionists were extremely sophisticated for the, for all of these feeding, whether, whatever species of livestock it is, it's very, very intense. It was even more intense than I thought. And I thought that it was unique to find out that, just like everybody else, you get into other species, they're all different. I mean, the individual people are different and so are individual numbers of livestock and how the different, like I mentioned to board earlier. Uh, one cow would greatly increase the absorption of the protein and another one, uh, reduced amount. I mean, didn't, but the herd average, when you do it for the entire population, it had a very encouraging. So, I'm excited about the potential your product has, so.
And we are too. It's been, it's been a long road, but, uh, it's, it's going to be worth it. It's going to be a great.
And Mr. Endries apologized to me too that he, we were on his to-do list to come and visit with us and he said, "I'd just been running and I just didn't get it done." And before I got there to talk to him, but he said that he was willing, if we wanted a quarterly or whatever progress report, they'd be willing to come and let us know how things are going. Tom?
Well, a couple of things, um, it's great to see Rick. I mean, seeing Rick over time, uh, is that, uh, we stay, you mentioned, uh, Hunter Roberts. And then we'll need to continue to make sure all that, we got extensions on extensions there. And then Stacy, uh, we had it in our budget for this year. Did we put it in there? We're going to approve the supplemental budget. Do we still have the same amount in there set aside, identified? We do. Okay. I don't.
We didn't change anything.
So, that's going to be rolled over. So, we're okay there. Mentioned the road agreement. What do you think needs to be done there?
Well, uh, Abigail Howard and I met numerous times. I think we wrapped it up sometime over the holidays last year. Uh, and at that time, it was ready to be signed, but we didn't really want to sign it and commit ourselves or the county until we had reached financial close. I think we should probably revisit that agreement and look at the language and make it current.
I think, yeah, if I remember right, Bob, there's, uh, even some dates in there. Those dates wouldn't be relevant. Is that right, Bob?
I believe so. I'd have to look at the, at the conditional use permit.
I mean, I can just tell you I have it with me. It was never signed by Navita, so it's, it's not a valid agreement period. But we would certainly want to revisit it before a final signature because the date's in it wouldn't apply anymore.
And, and I'm kind of apologetic. I think they, he, they'd done a better job of keeping the state informed and probably us. Uh, you know, Mr. Brunsmann has been communicating with the state.
Right.
But we weren't aware of it.
Then I want to make sure, um,
But it's our grant.
Is that, Bob, again, um, that was a conditional use permit, correct? Based upon the road agreement being signed. Is there something, is there language in there that if the project isn't built in so many days, you gotta start all over again?
Well, it's a three-year period, so there's.
With three? Okay.
Yes.
And actually, I did, uh, have a dialogue with Stephanie Alwine before she left. I talked with her and that's when we were talking about the state grants. Just to, I wanted to find out, I think she had some questions about the county committing to it and dates. And we gave her the best date that we could at the time. So, that would have been in spring, I believe.
I think you're right. Hey, any other questions? Jenny?
I guess, I appreciate the update and I think it's important that we all stay on the same page and know exactly where everybody's moving in the process. And I think, Dick, uh, as far as our timeframe, I mean, now they're talking spring of '15 for starting construction and for us to, you know, we certainly don't want to have the road all tore up. And I don't know what our schedule is for what you have planned as far as timing to get kind of started on the road part itself.
Well, our involvement in the road construction will be very minimal. Um, it's mainly from a budgetary standpoint that the money be, uh, made available. Is that, I, you know, as far as us doing any.
Right, no, I'm, I'm, I know you're, there'll be a contractor doing it, but their coordination of getting when it's going to be done, so it's usable. I mean, how soon? It's probably going to be in the spring for us. I mean, there's nothing going to be done until spring, I wouldn't think.
Right, right. And then you also got 34th Avenue and you've got Highway 77 going north. And they could all, realistically, it could happen in 2015 now.
Yeah. Well, yeah, for us, I mean, I, I don't think we're far enough along in this to say, "Let's start going to bid for the road." Because you're still in the process of your finance, finishing that. There's some things that are crucial to the project that you need to say, "It's a go now." So, that's what we need to know.
I think, I think, uh, if we get the road use agreement, the road agreement updated so that it's ready to be signed and if we can agree upon a milestone, say, when we get our term sheet signed or when we reach financial close, then we can give you, then we can sign it, give you notification, notice to proceed on the road. In the meantime, just, I think, like the last time we went through this, we can stay in communication with Mr. Burke and the other appropriate parties to coordinate schedules. Just have good communication. We can work through it.
Tom?
Yeah, good point, Dennis, is that, you know, refresh my memory, Rick. You know, we had this whole thing, the chicken or the egg. We want the road built. Uh, we want, we don't want to be building the road when you're done and product's coming. Do we want the road built before construction?
As I recall, you know, we, um, we're going to have a lot of the large equipment moved early on. So, after that, after a certain point in the schedule, uh, the road could, road construction, construction could start.
Then, uh, maybe May or June, we could start on the road. So, both are done at the right time?
Yeah, possibly. But, but again, I think we really need to sit down and look at our schedule and your construction schedule and the construction season and, and try to work out something that works best. I'm sure we can do it. We figured out a path forward last time.
Well, those, and this will be put out the bid, I assume. So, I'd definitely work with the, that, you know, there's projects being done right now up in water town, all over the place. While we don't want it done with their convenience, we need it done at our convenience, which will be, which is your convenience.
Right, and the earlier we can let them know and get that bidding done, the better.
Right, there you go.
Yeah, there's advantages to certain timeframes to do your bidding, you know, yeah. You understand that. Okay, any other questions? Rick, thanks. This is great communication between the two of us, you know, meaning this board and your company. And if we, if we do that more often, everybody's on the same page. We kind of know where we're at.
Sounds good.
Keep moving forward. Ryan, did you have a question? Okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Unless you have questions for us, we're, we're done with you. Okay, thanks, Rick. Moving on, uh, to our consent agenda. And I'm going to take these individually so that we understand what we're, what we're doing here and we probably, you know, the board would probably prefer to take action on them individually. First of all, we have our minutes of our 8:26 minutes. And, uh, we have some corrections. So, we have to approve the minutes as amended and it was an oversight on my part. It was, uh, caught by, uh, by Stacy after the, after the fact. Stacy, do you want to explain what we had to change? We had used the wrong words.
At the meeting last week, we had two right-of-way agreements and they were listed as resolutions and were acted on as resolutions during the meeting. They should be, should have been acted on as agreements. And so, the minutes reflect agreements and the number. But I wanted, we need to make you aware that we made that change to the minutes. And then the other thing is with the second reading of the ordinance that we had last week. It was, um, it isn't officially approved yet until we hold the public hearing, which we're going to take care of today. The action in the minutes reflect that you took action on a second reading, but we still, uh, have to hold a public hearing, um, as part of that second reading, which we'll do today.
So, will the action not be listed as an action on the agenda, on the minutes? Or are you going to correct that? Or we just take it up and have the public hearing this week and just act on it that way? I mean, it's.
You, you acted on the second reading, so that action is listed in the minutes.
Okay.
That you took, the action.
Just the public hearing.
But now we have to hold the public hearing. And then the ordinance will be published in its entirety with the minutes from today. And so, then it'll be the 20 days after publication of these minutes today that the ordinance will actually go into effect.
Okay, so we took the action last week. We're going to read it today. I, when we came to that item on the agenda, I looked at it and I, I looked at it and I, I should have said something, but I wasn't sure in my mind and I, and staff usually has it written down, right? And I talked to Abby afterwards. We screwed up and Abby says, "I missed it too." So, not putting blame on any, anybody, but we just happened, it was an oversight on our part. So, okay. If everybody understands our minutes, um, from 8:26 as corrected and amended, I think for the record, uh, we'll treat that as an individual item and someone move to approve.
Some.
Moved by Miller, second by Krogman, and no questions. Let's, Tom, did you have a question?
No, I'm good.
Okay, call or roll.
Wyeth?
Hi.
Krogman?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Falcon?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Um, if we're, we have another change on item C. So, item B, um, we're stepping aside, a little different than our unusual procedure here, but we may as well take them individually, is the approval of our travel education requests. Chair would entertain a motion to approve.
So, move.
Move by Falcon, second by Wyeth. Call or roll.
Krogman?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Falcon?
Hi.
Wyeth?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Then we have another change. It's Jason, um, we, uh, we have an action and our personnel action notice report. And we're going to put that up because it wasn't included in the packet. So, we're respectfully including it in, on our, uh, report this morning. And we're going to bring that forward for you. And since our copier next door is in the process of being fixed, I asked Jason to just put it up on the screen for everybody and then it didn't work. Well, maybe. Boy, that's about as clear as a snowstorm. Okay. And this, under the Personnel Action Report, uh, we didn't, by the time the action report was given, the, the, uh, the packet was already sent out. That's the reason we're showing it to you this morning. This is the action notice of the extended offer and the acceptance of Stacy Stephenson as our commission director. And it shows the, uh, the wage, the grade, and the wage $29.97. And you will see that at this time, the effective date is not established. And that's because this department, the commission department and the finance department are working together, uh, to determine which would be the best date for her to switch over and start for us. And also, Stacy is more than willing to work with this department and that department to put some emphasis on the election, to get us through this election. It'll be a joint venture between the two departments, so. Okay, that will be, thank you, staff. That will be included in our Personnel Action Report. Are there any questions on that? If not, then the chair would entertain a motion to approve the Personnel Action notices. Second by Falcon, second by Krogman. Any discussion? Please call or roll.
Miller?
Hi.
Falcon?
Hi.
Wyeth?
Hi.
Krogman?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Stacy, congratulations. We look forward to working with you as our new commission director. Thank you.
We do and welcome aboard.
Okay, under our routine business, um, we have a nine o'clock hearing, but I think this one won't take long, is the approval of the claims. Chair would entertain a motion. Move by Miller, second by Krogman. Discussion on the claims.
There was, um, an addition handed out to you this morning that was on your desks when you arrived. Some changes, I think, um, to cellular reimbursements.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay, did you have questions then? Okay, please call or roll.
Falcon?
Hi.
Wyeth?
Hi.
Krogman?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Okay, we are about a minute away from our public hearing. It would be unfair to call any of the department heads forward at this time to get one sentence into their report and, uh, um, then be asked to step aside. So, we'll wait, uh, 30 seconds now since I've been babbling on here a bit.
It's nine o'clock on the screen.
It says nine?
Down the screen.
Good, good. Okay, we have our public hearing and to approve resolution 1336, the 2015 provisional budget, um, for Brookings County. And, um, if we, we will move into the, uh, the public hearing at this point. And if there's anyone here present that would like to speak as a proponent of the budget before the conversation is brought to this table, once again, anyone that would like to speak as a proponent. Anyone here that would like to speak as an opponent of the proposed budget? Any opponents of the proposed budget? Hearing none, we'll close the hearing and we'll bring the discussion back to the table for the board to discuss. And for that purpose, I would ask for a motion to approve.
So, move.
Moved by Krogman, second by Falcon. Discussion.
Question, um, is that Navita project N-34, is that in the other uses? Or is that in public works?
You have $3 million in cash applied from the general fund that you're going to, um, I think the, we're going to transfer to highway.
That, that was back.
And that's, um.
I can't find it in the provisional budget. And that's not part of it, then? That was my question. Was it part of the provisional budget or?
It is, it is in the, yeah, it's on page four of the provisional budget, the very last page. Um, the very top line has your cash, uh, cash applied. Under general fund, the very first column. There's $3,038,725. And there's $500,000 from cash applied. Very top line.
Okay, so it's, you know, it's included in that. Yeah, that's why I was after the term, you know, the actual wording, but, okay, yeah.
Right.
Got you.
Okay, the one question I had, um, Stacy, is this the time that we make the adjustment, um, for the, the arrangement we have with the city in regards to the, the dollar amounts for library slash mental health, or do we do that?
You can do that. You can do that, um, I suppose you could do that now. It'd probably make better sense to do it as part of the annual budget, so that we can, um, because what we will do as part of the annual budget is we'll also pass a resolution that includes all of the changes made between the provisional and the annual. So then we can, um, show that change that you're talking about, that with the city at that, at that point. Um, I don't know that we want to make any changes to the provisional. I think we approve it as it's been published and then we will-
Sure.
I think we have a meeting scheduled for September 18th and we can discuss changes. And then prior to the annual budget being approved, we'll have a list of all of the changes that, um, we're making, so it's very clear what's changing from the provisional to the annual.
We just need to make, everybody make note of that on our to-do list, or whatever, so that we don't overlook it.
Right, I, yeah, and-
Because that would be an impact to both, or impact to mental health, yes.
I think she had that as a note in her note, yeah, if I remember right.
Yeah, um, Weldon had emailed both myself and Don about, about that, what the city had done, so it's in my notes, yeah.
And, and, yeah, in your, yeah, in your presentation. And the thing that, uh, I want you to have some time to think about this, now hang with me, that we're taking over domestic abuse, uh, no, East Central Behavior Health, and, um, and we're dropping 7,500, that's Weldon's request. But they had already cut East Central by 7,500. So do you want to put them back, the East Central back to full funding, which would be 15, and then do you want to cut the library by 15, and then he'll have to pick up the 15? And that way, they're basically agreeing to the 15. So this is something to think about, you're going to, 7,500 bucks is a lot of money to those people, so, uh, and they've been cut by 7,500 by the city, so that's why they're only asking for 7,500. So what you want to do with the library and East Central, I guess, you need to do some thinking.
Well, I'm not sure they can turn around and just do that, because that means their council has to approve another 7,500 out of the budget, right?
Right, but they're not done yet.
Okay.
But I just, yeah, it, it-
The ask was 7,500. The ask was 15, and they, and they gave them 7,500.
Then the other choice is that we just do the 7,500, it's done, and you want to add another 7,500 on top to make up for what is missing. So I mean, it's just something, food to think about, I, you know, something, yeah, food for thought, and, uh, we'll discuss it on the 18th, but, uh, that's essentially, they're going to be short 7,500 after this little go-around.
I got a quick question on the budget, Stacy. Roden Bridge Fund on this page four, right next to the cash applied, um, it seems like General Fund 101 was added up to total net taxes, but would Roden Bridge Fund 2001, wouldn't that add up to a million, 30,000?
Okay, start over again, I was kind of scrambling to find my sheet.
Sorry, um, page four again here, where we're at. Cash applied and, and stuff added, I don't know if that's right. Do you add up cash applied and drop it down, or is, is 311, it's hard to explain here, I guess, um, do the two numbers under Roden Bridge, are they supposed to add up to the one under the total net taxes? No? Okay.
No, cash applied is, it's kind of its own thing.
Okay, and then the stuff underneath it is its own thing?
Yes, 500, um, that 530,000 dollars is, um, just other revenue, I believe, is what we're looking at there.
Okay.
Taxes.
So they're not adding, we're not taking those two and adding them up?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And I guess, you know, next year's discussion of the budget, you know, the city was able to remove a non-managed from their request. All we did was take a portion of our non-managed requests, and so we're going to continue to get that same request next year. I think it would be good next year to sit down and if there's, you know, if we're talking about 25 minus some, you know, about 18,000 difference that we're still going to have to commit to the library, we should find 18,000 in other departments that are more county-oriented departments. And so the city is back at 100% for the library and we pick up some, it's still going to be a wash for everybody, that we didn't accomplish a lot.
Mm-hmm.
You know, uh, we picked up really from the city for something they were questioning funding for and picked that up, but we're still going to be requested to, to support the library next year, and I don't have a problem with that. I don't want them to lose money, but I don't know if it's our responsibility, let's, let's look at these non-managed earlier next year, maybe sit down with the city and see where we can, what is more to the county and to the city.
Exactly, and Mayor Weldon and I had that same discussion, and so we, but we thought we'll go in small steps, and this was step one to show that we can cooperate back and forth and get some of these things realigned, and so, yeah.
But that's an excellent point, Dennis, and that's what I'm trying to say, is that right now they're off the hook for 7,500 bucks, because if they come back, East Central Behavior Health and says, "We ain't making it, we need 7,500," because we're now there, we give them 7,500, uh, we just-
Yeah.
-picked up, you know.
And I'm, I, I had the same thought, I'm surprised the board member on that, on one of, on the mental health caught that. But I know you've, and there's, there's some other reasons that, that this makes it somewhat simpler if, if we are to fund it and if there's any reorganization or whatever in the future, one less, one less finger in the whole mix, you know, so. It'll work, it's just going to take a little time, and yes, there's, there's, I understand that, uh, there's 7,500 adjustment there. That, that mental health board member Wyeth may discuss it a little later.
And actually, I didn't realize, I, uh, put two and two together over the weekend, that all of a sudden, and I thought, I tried, it wasn't, didn't have enough time today-
Yeah.
-to, you know, find out, uh, but, so, I just wanted to warn you, something to think about before the 18th, before we-
Yep.
Now, this, this was sent, and I saw the calendar came out, this was sent, that's when we have to have it, on the 18th? It was sent out, because I've got to be at a 911 meeting in Mitchell, but I thought we were doing it on the 20-
They set that after you left last week.
I, I thought we were going to do it on the 23rd. Isn't that a meeting, commission meeting day?
Well, we have to approve the budget on the 23rd.
Yeah. We have to do it before the-
This is, this is if there's any change, okay. This is a special meeting to discuss any changes that you, that you want to make.
Okay.
So, um-
That's fine, that's fine. I mean, I'll, if I have comments, I'll get the board this room.
Yeah, we'll communicate with you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion, questions? I think we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
Please call or roll.
Wyeth?
Hi.
Krogman?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Falcon?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Now, we are to our department head reports. Um, Robert, here on the far end, we have a 9:30, do we not?
9:15 is our next.
9:15, well, Bob will be done.
Four minutes. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Great.
I'll go nice and quick since we got, uh, three minutes. August the 13th, we had a generator hooked up test in the building of Brookings. It did not work very well. We have to, uh, our generators good enough to power to some pumps only, so our IT system and all that would have to be on their own battery backups. And we've got to, got to do some more research, and then we'll have, bring the generator back over and we'll hook it up again. But, uh, right now, we did not get, get the mission accomplished. August the 15th, I attended a Brookings Committee for People with Disabilities. August 19 through 21, I was in Washington DC at the Department of Transportation Headquarters Building, had, um, good discussion there. August 21st, we had a local emergency planning committee meeting. August 25th, we started the City Transportation Steering Committee Monday meetings, and those will go through the end of September, and I'll give you an, uh, update on that at a later time in the future, once things start to work out. Bottom line, as of right now, there's really no recommendation to do on the bypass, because it's basically, they're ready to start letting bids on the bypass and the, and, uh, we did get some good, good, a good presentation on what's going to happen on US 14 bypass. August 26 to 28, we attended a Homeland Security Conference in Rapid City, Sheriff Stanwick, Fire Chief Hartman, and Don Chalos and Jamie Trickstead from South Dakota State University was there. It was a very good presentation. One of the better ones was from Boston, Massachusetts, where they had the, um, backpack bombings. I had actually heard from a, um, emergency room doctor that was there, at a different conference, and then this was the FBI people that did their investigation on how they actually found the bomber. Tonight, we've got a planning meeting, nothing over extraordinary. We should, we may be using our first alternates tonight, we'll have to see, our chairman is back from his China trip, so we'll have to see what happens tonight at the meeting. Tomorrow, Conservation District has a local working group meeting starting up, and this might have something to do with the way the, the legislators starting to do the drainage with the regional watersheds. So I'm going to send my deputy director over to that, and, um, hopefully that'll be a good working group that'll continue and, and be, look, for a long time. And I've also got the Alan Miller from South Dakota Office of Emergency Management, Region Six, coming up to meet me in the afternoon to discuss our SLA, which we did get our, our first three quarters payment, and we put that in the bank. September 8 through 11, Monday through Thursday next week, I've got a South Dakota Emergency Management Association meeting up in Watertown. September 16, 17, I'll be out on vacation. September 18, if any commissioners available, there is a, the Regional Task Force Subcommittee is going to have a meeting over Innovation Village. Representative Spence Holly contacted me and he invited my office to be there. I'm going to try to make it back off my vacation to be there, if not Deputy Director Thoreau will be there, and there is, the commission's also invited. It's going to be from nine o'clock to three o'clock approximately over at Innovation Village. And what they want, they want to, they're going to, it's just a four-member Subcommittee from the task force, and they want to present what, what they think is going to work and get local input to see, hey, is this, is this what we're looking for, or isn't it, before it goes to the big legislature in, in Pierre. Uh, September 18th, sir.
Yeah, we have a little meeting in the morning, and what's the topic again, what, I mean, what's the-
Drainage.
Yeah.
States, the state drainage log will be changed.
Watershed thing, or drainage, or both?
Well, that's, they, they call it the regional task, it's a regional water, regional, I guess I don't know what the official name of their-
Watershed.
Yeah, that watershed.
Yeah, correct.
It's in the, that, uh, the community room at Innovation Village.
He just told me the Innovation Village, and I asked him if he was going to get any other invitation, he said, "No, you've got it." So that's why I wanted to bring it to the board's attention and I, I'm just using his language, not mine. And just to give you a heads up, October 15 to 31, the last half of October, I'll be out of the office between official trips and vacation. And my office should be able to handle everything while I'm gone. Any questions?
Um, any questions for Bob? We, we need, we should, it's going to be difficult, but, uh, we should have somebody at that meeting on the 18th.
I would recommend that I'm-
Nothing else I can leave the night before and, and be here for it, because, uh, all of this is going to blend into a whole mishmash of stuff, including the EPA's waters of the US and, uh, you know, so we should, as a board, be informed on it. The other thing, Bob, I know you've been trying to make contact with, with some of the landowners and township people for our drainage committee, have you had any success?
By all means, do you have a date when you want to meet?
No, we're waiting to find, get some names of those people and then we'll set a date.
Yeah, I, I will send you the names, I've got the names.
Okay, get those to, um, Denny and I, and, and Mr. Weldon, and we'll, uh, set a date and move forward.
So Commissioner Falcon, Larson, and Mr. Weldon.
Yep.
Okay, I'll get you the names today.
Okay, and we can keep that moving forward, and also that committee, that meeting on the 18th and everything that's going on about waters and watersheds and this and that is probably, you know, is relevant to that discussion as well, so.
By all means.
Okay? Any other questions? Yeah?
That, that budget meeting shouldn't take that long, should it? I mean, if it starts at 8:30, it would probably almost be done by nine, unless there's, I'm interested in-
Going, I guess, uh, if three of us show up, do we have to notify the press then? But-
Unless you want to start the meeting earlier, started at eight.
What, what time does that meeting start?
Approximately nine, well, he said nine to three, so, um, if you show up a little bit late, it's, staff will be there, a member of my staff or myself will be there at nine o'clock when it starts.
The other thing, 18th, does, that's the last day of state convention, isn't it? There's some things going on in the morning, or is it all done on the 17th?
It's all done on Wednesday.
Done on the 17th.
I mean, what about?
Okay.
Do we, do we want, do we do Friday for the budget meeting?
We can, we can make this work.
It'll work.
It'll, yeah.
So not going to have that much discussion on?
From Bob's department, they can do that for us.
Yeah, I think staff will cover it until we get there. But it, it, we, as far as public notice, if we put it on our, uh, agendas, bottoms of our agendas, the board is invited to these functions or these things, I think that covers us from a public notice standpoint, correct? That's what we usually do, so.
Yeah, this watershed thing is not going to be a public meeting, it's just a meeting of, well, I guess, any, any government meetings are public meetings, so never mind, scratch it out.
Yeah. Okay, with that, thanks, Bob, and we'll move on to our, um, 9:15, which is now 9:18 or whatever, 9:20. That clock's wrong. Clock's off. Okay, good morning, and, uh, for the record, just say your name into the microphone and then, uh, proceed with your report.
Okay, good morning, everybody, uh, Scott Moore with Banner Associates. Um, 34th Avenue, the street's designed on 34th. What we're still working on is getting the drainage, trying to improve drainage, or seeing if we got to work with just the drainage we got. That's been the slow point on this. As far as our schedule, having it ready for bids in January, there's, should be no problem meeting that whatsoever. It's taking longer than I anticipated, but everything is still falling together pretty good as far as being ready for bids by January. Uh, I did talk with Stacy, I believe her name is, out with Pierre for the railroad arms permit that we applied for, and her response was in October. October 1st, they would make the decision on that grant for the arms. I got two contacts now with the New Railroad for getting the permitting to work within their right-of-way, and so far, that's all I have, is two names. I've talked with, or left them voice messages, but I haven't gotten any reply back from them, so I'll keep working on that. Um, so as far as the project goes, we're, we're right on track, we got the H-plats ready. Dick and I will be meeting probably Thursday morning to discuss the, have the H-plats for the, the additional right-of-way, which is, we're looking at an 80-foot right-of-way, and then we're going to get 25-foot easements outside the right-of-way for utilities for future planning. Because right now, it, it appears that for the street design goes, the 100-foot right-of-way wasn't going to gain you anything, other than just having the additional right-of-way. So we, we went with an 80-foot right-of-way, and then we will look at procuring 25-foot utility easements outside that right-of-way for the Sioux Valley Electric and Brookings Utilities, should time come and they have to move, they got a place to move. So that's, that's what we're working on as far as the H-plats and the easement drawings are.
And you have visited with Sioux Valley and everything's kosher, leaving it as it is?
That's, you know, they still want to see our final design, but it, right now, we've discussed with Sioux Valley and Brookings Utilities that if we get in an area by their poles, that we can work around their poles and leave them appropriate amount of material there, so they don't feel that their poles are going to tip over, and, like I said, just the underground portion on the very south end of 34th is where Sioux Valley is still wanting to see the final drainage design, so they can see if that's going to be affected, but it shouldn't affect it. The last time I looked, the drainage and their line was well outside where we would be affecting for drainage. Uh, the problem is, we didn't actually shoot where their line- The problem is, we didn't actually shoot where their line is because it was outside the right of way. And when we initially surveyed, we went right of way to right of way. So we have it now, one called and located, and our surveyors are out this morning getting it. So we'll know exactly where that line's at and we'll be able to work around it.
Scott, you know, the 25-foot easement, which, you know, so trying to cooperate with the utilities, is that on each side? So total of 50 feet? That puts us on 130 feet. Do we have enough room between water?
With the 80-foot right of way and then an additional 25-foot utility easement, that should.
Is this 25 total or 25 each side?
Each side.
So 50, so 130 feet altogether. I'm just wondering, my memory is that.
There's a couple of places out there where that additional 25 feet's going to get you out into the water, but it'll still allow places for them to put the poles if they got to move outside the right of way.
Okay. Now, hopefully, this is my biggest fear, that we get all, they're going to show us the final, final to Sioux Valley and they say, oh, ain't going to work, you know, the little round thing, those were the dirt pileups. And so then we're faced with spending a lot more money. But being the hopeful guy, is they're going to say, everything's just great. Then, didn't we promise them, this is where Abby would come into play, that at some point in time, if we expanded the, a contract would be written that if we ever expanded the road to a little more, changed the road to a wider.
Add an additional lane.
Yeah. And I don't know the legal language, but that we would then pay to move.
Yes.
That was our caveat with them. If we expanded the road at that time, yeah, we'd have to pay it anyway. This is guarantees we're paying.
We just basically have asked them if they needed to move it now because we're going to have to pay for it either now or in the future. And so we're waiting for the agreement from them to say, hopefully, they say, you know what? We're good with where they're at now with this 80-foot, and we're not going to move them when we build this new road. But they wanted an agreement, what Tom's talking about, that if we decided to go to three lanes and expand it into the 80, that we would pay for it, which I don't think we're committing anything we wouldn't have to do anyway.
And, you know, by the time, we need three lanes out there. There's just chance those poles, they claim those poles are going to last forever, but they're not going to, you know, that they'd be ready to move anyway. And that's the purpose of the extra 25 feet. So we're good to go. They've got their easement that replaces basically the easement they have already.
Yeah, my question, the thing is, would expedite the ability to move it, basically, is that we wouldn't have to go back and go get those easements again and take time to do that that we'd already have since we're already negotiating with them. But I was thinking, is 25 a set number for the utilities? I mean, if we gave them, if they ended up getting a 15-foot easement rather than 25? I mean, I was thinking that that was kind of flexible a little bit on those numbers because of the water issue.
Well, and typically with the utility easements, you would give them a temporary 50-foot easement for construction. And then when it's done, it's back down to either 10 feet, 15 feet, 20 feet or 25 feet. So that's where the negotiating will come in with the property owners. They might not be willing to give us a 25-foot utility easement. So then we'd look at, they're a 20 footer or a 15 footer. But we, I don't think you want to go any less than 15.
That's okay. I think that was the discussion we had there too. I just, I didn't all of a sudden, you know, want to get not enough turnaround and negotiate out not enough for what they're expecting and we have to go back again down the road, so.
Yeah. So we'll ask for the 25 feet now and see where we go with that one, the negotiating.
Yeah. I was wondering if you could, when you're contacting Sioux Valley, because it seemed like in our many conversations that less than 25 was acceptable with them. And we need, we need to know what they exactly need, I guess.
And once I have the drainage portion of it on that south end come to where I feel comfortable with it and I can send it to them so they'll get the warm fuzzy feeling, then we can. But I think right now, we're going to, Dick will have the H plats and easement drawings. And, and I think at this time, we just ask for the 25 feet and see where that gets us. Property owners might not go with it, but I think you ask for it and see what happens.
And then right of way is a lot more. Easements, it sounded like normally Sioux Valley gets them relatively cheap, for a buck, you know, and things like that. But the right of way, of course, we'll have to decide how much we're going. Is that praised value or how's that done? Well, that's negotiated and, but we haven't, we don't have any idea if we're buying a tenth of an acre or a hundred acres. We got to see his drawings so we know what we're talking about.
Yeah, we got, we got the H plats right here.
Well, but if, oops. I guess the question for the commission is, if we got to buy Sioux Valley out of there, you want to, and it's two feet difference. You want to narrow the road a couple of feet or narrow, change the ditch? Or do you want to stick with this plan no matter what? Well, that's, I haven't seen the plan. Yeah. But I mean, that, that's why I'm saying, Scott, you got a plan, but that plan may not be the final plan that the commission wants to do. Because if it finds out, you know, we're a few, giving up a few feet of right of way, we can get by without moving Sioux Valley. You know, I guess we got to weigh the cost of moving Sioux Valley and the kind of road we want.
Yeah. But I'm not sure where you're headed with the conversation simply because number one, we need to see that plan. Then we can talk about what you're talking about.
That's what I'm trying to tell Scott, not you, is that we're not ready to go on the right of way yet because we don't know, we haven't approved what you have. I mean, we may say, that ain't going to work because we don't want to spend that money to Sioux Valley because we're willing to have a little different road. So what I'm saying, Scott, you got a plan, but we don't know if the commission's approved it or Sioux Valley's approved it.
Correct. And I just, what I need to get finished up is just the drainage portion of it. Then I can have the plans sitting in front of you and Sioux Valley and they.
Yeah.
But I think in lieu of time, that the conversations need to start with the landowners as far as easements.
Conversation never hurts anything, but we're not, you know, quite ready to pull the trigger. No, conversation's great. Better to know if we got another problem out there.
Exactly.
Yeah. No, I have no problem with that. But as far as going out and buying them, I, you know, I think getting a hair ahead of the game. I think, I think for the, to bring the conversation back to its central point at this table, I think what needs to be done is number one, this process is taking a lot longer than I expected it to. And I think your people need to get, apparently you got a drawing. You need to get back with our Subcommittee and show them the drawings and how many acres it is and where we need and what it is that we got to buy. And have that conversation with them and allow those two gentlemen to create some kind of a plan or a recommendation to this board and then come back to us with, with that option. Then we'll move forward. I mean, we're waiting for you guys to get done. That's what we're waiting for. Yep. And our patience is getting a little bit thin.
Been, yes, I understand.
So, okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, Scott. And we look forward to, to adequate updating.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, did you want us to come in every month or give you an update or how do you want to do?
Well, I think we've got, we've got the committee and you work closely with those two gentlemen that we've assigned to the committee. And, and you guys decide if you need to come in or if they can report. And if it's going to be more questions, we might need you or Brad or somebody from your organization.
Okay.
Yeah. But communication is pretty important.
Yep.
We've been reporting right along to them, Scott. It got to a point though, that we, we need to know where Sioux Valley is and all that. And so that's probably the next huge thing and then we can. They're only a phone call away. Well, they got to see the file. They're not going to prove anything. But they got to see what, they got to see what we, we haven't seen.
Well, the drainage needs to be done first. And that's just being done today. So we need to step it up.
Yep. Yep.
I would, I would think with the Subcommittee is that if there's a change, you need to let them know, whether it's a weekly change or a monthly change or two-week change. And if they don't hear from you in a month, they're probably going to be calling you and saying, there hasn't been any change in this in the last month. I mean, so we can keep things going. I just, you know, there's no reason to set up a meeting every week if nothing changed. But if nothing's changed, then they're going to be concerned, so that'd be, just keep us.
We'll do better with the communication part of it.
Oh, good. I'm looking forward to it. Okay. Thanks, Scott. We got a hearing that we're three minutes late for. This time, we'll, we'll take this brief recess and open the hearing for the second reading of the ordinance 2014-2. And this is the ordinance providing for the adoption of the 2015 International Building Code, excuse me, and the 2015 International Residential Code. And at this time, if it's be, the pleasure of the board will dispense with the reading of the, of the report and the ordinance in its entirety because it's rather lengthy and it was publicly made available to the public on our website as well as in our packets. So at this time, the chair would call upon anyone that would like to speak as a proponent of the proposed ordinance. Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Hearing none. Is anyone here as an opponent? Once again, any opponents to speak in regards to the ordinance? Hearing none, we will close the hearing. We'll come back into general session. And at this time, for the purpose of discussion, the chair would entertain a motion. Second by Falcon, second by Wysef. And at this time, I would certainly welcome any discussion or questions from any of our staff, meaning our department heads. None? If not, please call a roll.
Kropman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Falcon.
Aye.
Wysef.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Our, back to department heads. Vicki from Finance. Good morning.
Good morning. And just to give you an update, we did get the centrally assessed utilities from the state last week. And there's a few things I have to go over with Joyce on it regarding a discretionary formula for Northwestern Public Service or Northwestern. So I don't have the exact figures, but Basin Electric is going on their first year of the discretionary formula that we get the percentage back to the county. So right now, we, last year, our utilities were 44 million, 641, 947. And with that increase, it's going to be right around 137 million. So it is going up substantially, about $90 million. So that is a good problem to have. We will be raising more tax dollars. And we will, I'll get together with Stacy and when we, when Joyce gets back, we'll have some figures together with what it will actually be for you. So that is a good, good issue to have. And last Thursday, the sheriff's office sold five mobile homes from distress warrants that were issued from our office in January that were not paid. And all five of them got sold, so that is good news. And the total was about $1,182 from the five mobile homes. They were all older mobile homes, which means that they were 1976 or older. So they were registered mobile homes. But either they'll be destroyed, in one case, I think we're having one destroyed. The rest of them will hopefully be back on the tax rolls to somebody that will be able to pay them and we can go on from there. And I just want to congratulate Stacy too for her new position. We will sure miss her and, but we know she's not very far away and she will help us. I know that. So, so that's good news. I think it'll be a good fit for everybody. So appreciate that. And anybody have any questions?
Questions of Vicki? Thank you, Vicki. The, I'm glad that we got some of those mobile homes cleaned up. And I know you said one, but I think there's probably two, three more that are going to be good riddens. I mean, they're just uninhabitable really. And it's going to take care of a couple of nuisances that we've been working on for a long time, so.
Right. It's just good to keep up with this on a yearly basis. And last year, I don't think any of them sold. So this year, it was really a big plus to have five of them sold, so. And just great to work with the sheriff's office. I know I've said this before, but when you go to the conventions and the state meetings, there are so many offices that do not get along. And our sheriff's office is just great to get along with. And so we appreciate that. They're great to work with.
Okay. And I want to thank you and as the Commission Department, we're looking forward to working with you and your department through the election process. And we're going to, I visited with Stacy and she's willing to kind of do a dual role in a sense that is, you know, make sure that somebody new doesn't have to come in and take over the elections.
Yeah.
So.
That'll, that'll be great. We have our person that left prior. Those, the deadline for that applications are Friday. So now we'll have to advertise for the other position too. So we'll be short-staffed here for a while, but we'll, we'll work with it. And Stacy, I know she's not very far away. She'll help us.
Yep. Very good.
We're holding her to that.
A joint effort. Okay. Marty, after that big buildup, gee.
I wish I could take over the press.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, I think Scott Sebring, my assistant sheriff, takes care of all that civil process stuff. So he does a good job with that, so.
Good.
He really digs in and tries to get the most money we can, but there's not much there. So we're lucky we got anything on some of those trailers, so. Anyway, as far as jail statistics, I have 27 on PBTs, 23 on SCRAM. I got one that comes in for a urinalysis. And so total, we have 51 people on 24/7 program. At the present time, we have 27 inmates. They continue to be high maintenance for us and with medical costs and so forth. The department's been busy. We had some vandalisms in River Ridge a couple of weeks ago. And the city police have been plagued in the Indian Hills area with vandalism, slicing trampolines and so forth all summer. And I thank the chief for moving them to the county because they moved into River Ridge. But one of their patrol officers had happened to stop three kids walking back in first part of August. So anyway, we started putting things together out at River Ridge. They put some game cameras up and between the city police department and my office, we were able to solve those. So solved all the ones in Indian Hills and then the ones in River Ridge. So it's good cooperation with the two agencies on that, so. I lost my office assistant to the state's attorney's office. And I'm glad that you're getting a good employee there. I may have to bring up one of my correction officers to kind of help with the window. It gets pretty busy on certain days and stuff, so we may have, have, it's almost too much for one person with the window and so forth on court days and stuff, so. May do some of that, but we'll make it work. So I'm happy for Amber. You're getting a good employee, so. Other than that, I don't have, we tried to update with you with the news media, so you guys, the commission pretty much stays on top of a lot of this stuff too. So unless you have some questions for me.
Anybody? Tom? Well, Vicki handled her loss a lot better than you just handled yours.
We'll have all of our departments fighting here pretty soon. I just wanted to commend your, your sheriff's deputies for, for the quick action and response out there in River Ridge. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, we had, we put some extra staff out there. We have some, game cameras are great. We put game cameras out there. Some of the residents put game cameras up. And of course, it helps to have two commissioners live out there to, to beef it up a little bit.
I just, I warned my kids, you think you're sneaking out, we're going to get you on the game camera.
Yeah, there you go. There you go, yeah.
Okay. No other questions? Thanks, Marty. See your staff at the tailgates, I suppose.
Yeah. That's going to start, yes.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Burke from Highway.
Morning. What started out to be kind of an uneventful morning for me has turned into, uh, kind of an update session for you guys. We've got some copies of agreements coming in the mail, the hard copies, uh, for our Highway seventy-seven project next year, which will be using our stip money and, uh, also, um, the fifteen percent match can come from, uh, the state funds. But that was the one we signed an agreement earlier that since it was coming in, uh, higher than what they'd anticipated, that we would make up the difference of whatever that, uh, project would cost. And if you remember that, that is roughly, they figured, anticipated in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand dollars. But that is a, that is a definite goal and that will be a January one bid letting. I shouldn't say January one, it'll, it's a January two thousand and fifteen bid letting. And that's all done through the state DOT, so, um, and then also with Scott's update on the Highway thirty-four, Thirty-Fourth Avenue project, um, you know, as you know, the deadlines are, are coming in and, um, we're not necessarily as far forward as we would like to be maybe, but, uh, we're kinda moving in the right direction. So that's, that's a secondary thing to, um, keep in mind is it's, it's going to be a, a very, uh, large project. And most likely, uh, I think you could see it happen in two thousand and fifteen with no problem, especially if they get the railroad, uh, grant that they want. I'm still waiting on approval from, uh, EPA for the box culvert, uh, on Highway forty. However, the box is made, Holloway's is lined up to do the work. We just gotta get the permit in hand. And then the building is, uh, slow but sure, but, uh, you know, it's got an October first, uh, completion date, so, uh, that's, that's gonna have to move, uh, along pretty rapidly. And then, uh, I'm waiting till that gets a little further along before I commit to, um, you know, lining up contractors and whatever for the, uh, weed board remodeling and also the sheriff's, um, evidence, uh, room that we'll be creating for, for Marty's department. Which brings me to my, another thing that, that come up with is, um, an email that we received from Paul Cosbooth and he's the, uh, director of the Division of Agricultural Development. And they've been working very strongly with the dairies and trying to encourage, uh, their development and whatever. And one thing with the, the dairy up at that Northern Sky Dairy, north of Bruce, their access road has always been kind of a conversation piece, so to speak. And, uh, they worked a little bit to get it, um, onboard and, and working. Well, they would like to have a grant application submitted, um, that would allow for this road to be improved. And, um, some of the improvements, I guess, they, they, they were asking and, you know, um, that I contributed my two cents worth, uh, you know, like removing some of the trees out of the right of way, uh, increasing the gravel, uh, surface gravel to the road, improving drainage, uh, stuff that has kinda already been done, but they hadn't really taken it to a, uh, I don't know what you'd call it, a finished, uh, product, I would say. It's, you know, it's done, it's better, but it's not great. Well, anyway, to make a long story short, um, Paul was wondering if Brookings County, uh, he's speaking on behalf of the DOT that they would like to have Brookings County sign a grant request, uh, to do this, um, project. However, um, there'd have to be an agreement between us and the townships, uh, for this to take place. My, uh, opinion and, and I, I guess I hope Stephanie would agree is I, I feel our participation is, is pretty well expended. I, I think, um, our plate's pretty full. Uh, I think the townships stand to, uh, take a little bit of responsibility, uh, and move this forward if they see fit. And, um, I think what, uh, you know, never has there any been, uh, any, oh, like with Navida, you know, where we'll, we'll participate, but then we'll take over the road type of thing. It's nothing like that. It's just the idea that they wanted some, um...
They need somebody to sign the grant.
Right, right. And so I, I mean, it, I guess what I'm asking the board is, is what your general consensus would be. My recommendation would be to, uh, have me, uh, get in contact with Paul and just inform him that I think it would be best if the townships, it's Sterling and Eureka are the two townships that are involved. And if they wanna submit the grant application or sign it or whatever, um, that's fine. They've got everything done for them, basically. It's just the idea they've gotta have, uh, someone initiate it, uh, to get the process rolling, so. That's the reason for the kind of a lengthy explanation is I wanted you to be aware of all the projects that we've kinda got on our plate already. And due to nobody's fault, they, they're all kinda stacked up like dominoes. And if we take on another one, um, you know, there, there's, there's kind of a limit. Once in a while, you gotta just...
I think, I, if I may, I think to go a little further with this, what happened here was that the townships made, the owner of the dairy put out a significant amount of money. If you remember when we went on that tour, do you remember that? And I think this is kind of to make up for that, so that the dairy owner didn't have to put out so much money to, to improve this road.
Mm-hmm.
And apparently, I, I think Paul took it on himself to try to help the, the dairy out. And, and, um, I got this email and so did Dick. And, and I, I just think that if, um, I think the townships should, should sign on to this. I really don't think that the county needs to do this, to do anything with it. He just was asking for direction. I think it was a courtesy to us if, if we wanted to sign on.
Well, I guess this gives a perfect reason why District, uh, Todd Case and his group, uh, have good, better, best locations that maybe this, as far as roads go, wasn't the best location. I mean, uh, and I knew that they put a ton of money in, but, uh, I guess there must be a reason why Paul asked us, rather than the townships, convenience of one government entity maybe, but, uh, geez, I think our, our responsibility is economic development in the county and dairies such as that one up there is definitely economic development. I don't wanna overburden you with work, but we're not doing the work, we're just putting in the grant.
Right.
And I'm not sure why we wouldn't do that.
Well, part of it, I think you touched on, from day one, the townships didn't really want any part of it, so to speak, uh, until they found out they could get some road improvement and they, they kinda followed in line. The other thing is with doing this grant application, I had met with, uh, this Ty Hishbaum and with the LTAP people and whatever, and they were just having kind of a, a roundtable discussion on, you know, what does this road really need? You know, what are we missing? What are we, uh, needing to follow through with to make it a good access road? Well, it got to a point where you were splitting hairs, you know, that if you're gonna do it, you better do it right, blah, blah, blah. And, and it just snowballed to a point where everybody, again, just took a standoff approach. Why bother? So then Paul and Ty got ahold of me and said, isn't there just kind of a down-to-earth, common sense type approach to this? That we could maybe follow, that we could make it a better, uh, access road, but yet not break the bank? Basically is what, what, what was discussed. And so I went, drove the road a couple, three times and, and wrote down the stuff that I think, uh, you know, needs immediate attention, stuff that could be addressed in the future and things that if there ever came a point where such and such happened, in other words, uh, uh, the opportunity to, to get more funds, this is where I would spend the money. And then I just turned it into them and, and that's where Paul thanked me for my, you know, information. And again, reassuring me that, that it wasn't any more than that, that you're just giving information. But it never fails, it turns around when it gets down to signing your name on a piece of paper or being the supporter or whatever, like you say, whether it's supposed to be us or the townships or whoever, somebody's gonna have to do it. And I guess if, if the general consensus of the board is that, that the county should sign it and get the process going, I can do that. And if it's that you feel the township should, uh, take the bull by the horns and, and try to, you know, direct how things are going, then, then I definitely think that, that I should notify Paul and say it's, you know, in our best interest, I think, for you to contact the townships and they'll do whatever you need them to do to get the process going. But the DOT, obviously, just like with Navida or any of these other grants, they cannot, they cannot move forward without someone supporting and doing it, so that's...
Question, um, is it integral that if we sign it, that we have to maintain that road?
No.
So this grant could be done, turned over, and, but the project be updated through, so who would handle the upgrading of the road? The township?
It would have to be because it's a township road. Also, that's what he's telling us also is we can't make decisions on a township road because it's not our road.
Right.
So if we decided, if, if you said, yeah, let's move forward, I would still have to contact the township boards and get their permission to move ahead with this. Now, it would, it would be kind of a no-brainer, I would say, that they would wanna move forward, but you don't know, so.
Is the grant then something that is limited to this road? Because one of the things about it would be is, okay, they give this grant and goes, we're not administering it. And township turns around and says, ah, we're not gonna do this road, we're gonna do this bridge instead, type of thing. That, it's, it would be identified for the upgrade of this road.
Right.
Well, another way, I just don't wanna run roughshod over the townships, but it just seems like we should be the lead organization in economic development. At least, uh, call the townships in and fill them in, see if we can work together. I just hate to say, hey, Paul, we're not, well, we're not interested in economic development that much, you know? Unless future economic development on roads that we pick, you know? We don't wanna clean up old messes, but I'd just say, you know, you go, you know, hold the townships and figure it out. I, I just feel as a leader, leading agency here that we should at least be in a leadership role, maybe not sign off on it. Cause I don't wanna just, you know, run roughshod over the townships. They should be a participating partner, but, but I just somehow feel that we should be a... Well, Commissioner Wyeth Seth, that it, you, you just sit here and listen to the conversation and, and we've got one or two townships that are involved here. So they're two political subdivisions that run their business. This happens to be their road. I think if, if we can, obviously through First District, uh, they can get help getting their grant applications in. And our role would be, uh, we recognize economic development, but our role would be to offer a letter of support for the townships to receive this grant. We recognize the, the issue, the validity of the road and, but it's, it's their road, it's their grant application, so they should, and First District will help them.
It's all, it's all ready to go.
They can make the application and we can certainly give them a letter of support.
The application is done, it just needs a signature.
Well, you know, they need to sign it and we'll support it.
That's what I think too. I, and I think what Dick is looking for is a general consensus of the board.
What's the consensus?
Hasn't been talked to at all?
Yeah, they know about it.
And what was their attitude?
I did.
Paul's the one that...
Yeah, Paul's the one, the guy from the Department of Ag, so, but why is he asking us that?
Yeah, something's not...
He's a courtesy to us.
Right.
So that we know what's going on.
Oh, he asked for us to sign it?
Yeah.
Yeah, not...
Well, we, we have to initiate it.
I'm, I'm with Tom. I'm not understanding the, uh, I guess I thought the request was for us to, um, be the lead organization to sign it. He wanna see it.
Yeah, show them the email.
It's just a request that someone, the DOT cannot move the application forward without someone, a governmental entity, supporting it. And so we can, we can do it as a county because we're obviously a government entity. And we would have to do it on the graces of the townships agreeing that, yes, county, go ahead and do it. We, it's just the opposite of what you guys are discussing. And that's my feeling of why the county should take a step-back approach, let the townships deal with it. Because it's getting more and more where they come to us first before they've even approached the township and that...
Well, I guess I'm, I'm kinda leaning with Tom here a little bit. When you're talking two different townships, is this gonna get done? Is my question is, because that, that's, you know, when you're dealing with two different entities, is all of a sudden one township says, yeah, the other one says, no. Are we, should, should we be the one overseeing the thing saying, hey, we're gonna make this request and, and we're gonna do this and, and this is what we're doing, but we're expecting the townships to carry out your, your type of stuff? Because there's more than one township involved. And, and that's, I guess my question is, and, and, and I agree with him, you know, we do have this economic development engine here and they have invested, you know, quite a bit into that road to begin with. Uh, and, and I think we need to, I'm not saying finish the project, but if, if there's a grant out there that we can finish this project, you know, should we be the leader on it between two townships to say, hey, we wanna get this thing done? We're gonna help get this started, but you guys need to be on board and this is what's gonna happen. Can you do that? You know, cause otherwise I'm not sure why he's asking for us to do it. I mean, you would think that he'd work with these government entities as the townships, have them make the request, and this shouldn't even be in front of us. But if he's running into problems or thinks there's gonna be problems that it's not gonna get done, I don't have a problem stepping up and taking, and doing it, so.
I think, I think, uh, you're, you're right in your thinking. And I think if the townships would have been a little more proactive from day one, I think they would have, this wouldn't be taking place, uh, to begin with. So you're right. I think Paul just has that lingering doubt that if something does, I understand what you're saying.
And that's my concern, cause I, you know, I don't wanna fool around with them now too. They've invested, they've put some money in front, in there, more than some other people have. And, and I don't want to now all of a sudden get into political mess with them, you know, and let, let's get, move this forward.
Right.
Move this going. Um, what does First District have, I guess, um, you know, would First District, we have a contract with First District, right? The townships don't, right?
Right.
So if we started this and asked First District to make the application, do that kinda stuff, is that something they could do on behalf of the townships? Uh, and we'd be the lead organization for it?
They, they would, but they've already done that.
Okay, so First District has?
Yes, it's all done.
Yeah, everything is taken care of. But like I say, they probably have a, a doubt whether they'll sign it. But like Paul says, it should be a no-brainer. I mean, it should be something that they'll gladly embrace. It's two hundred thousand dollars of money.
Right, what if, I guess what if we did this? What if we said, okay, we're gonna step away, but if something happens here and he runs into a snag, you know, come back to us? Not, I, I guess I'm saying this from, I'm not speaking for obviously all of you guys, but I guess I don't wanna see it slip away if there's some grant money out there, a chance to get, to improve that road. Uh, and if we run into snag or problems dealing with, uh, the townships on it, um, you know, I think we'd help instead of... Maybe we let them go, see if the townships will do it. We run into problems, come back to us and we'll do it.
I'm, I'm with Ryan exactly. Um, yeah, especially after reading the letter, it says they're okay with us doing it, um...
Yeah, especially after reading the letter, it says, they're okay with us doing it. It's a little confusing, but as far as I'm concerned, but I'd take a positive point. Paul, looks like you got it all in hand with the townships. Thank you for doing this. And please proceed, and if any problems arise, the county would be willing to help or work with it. That's.
Okay.
After reading the letter, they're, I'm not sure why you sent the letter, why not just do it? But other than.
It was a courtesy, I'm sure.
But it talks about, we're okay with you guys doing this. I didn't ask to do it. I mean, so.
See, that's what's the confusing thing for us also is that, you know, when you meet in a very casual setting and you're discussing things across the table like we are now, and you give them a common sense approach to their problem, so to speak, and what would be a possible solution? And then when they come back and they want, you know, support for that application, then it makes it sound like, well, this was completely my idea and I couldn't care less whether it was.
Yeah, because it's not your role, but it's our county, so we do care.
Well, I mean, that's the thing that makes my position difficult at times because there are numerous people that are always calling for an opinion and I give them an opinion, but that somehow gets related as I'm an authority, which Abby knows very well, I'm not, so.
I think, I think the message is for the sake of the clock on the wall is the fact that, you know, that the townships, we don't wanna overrule them, we wanna support them and they need to sign off on the grant that, obviously, all they have to do is sign and they're gonna get it. But we would certainly give them a letter of support, supporting their efforts to this.
Okay.
Next on your agenda.
That's all I have.
So you got?
I got a couple, two things. One, I just wanna follow up on Stephanie's, very good point, conversation is worth starting. Are we agreement that maybe Dick oughta go out and just say, right now, the plan is to have an 80-foot right-of-way and whatever we need and they've got that figured out and that we may want a 25, we're looking possibly for a 25 easement on your side.
Well, I think they're gonna meet on Thursday, right?
Thursday morning.
And the drainage stuff should be done by then, or at least to have an idea, the surveying will be done. So I think after that, it would be a good idea for him.
Well, at this point, the commission hasn't approved the exact road, so that's, but yeah, I'm all for Stephanie's idea that you get out, I hate to add to that long list, but you get out and see what the water's like, I guess, before we jump in.
Well, and that's something, these are all things that have to take place and that's why sometimes when the conversation gets bottled up, it can delay things and they've gotta be taken care of sooner or later, so.
Sure be good to get out there and like Stephanie says, and get things rolling, not knowing, nothing signed, nothing, just information, you know, see what you got.
So let me ask a question, you're meeting Thursday with him?
Yep.
Okay, do we need to be there?
Basically, he's gonna go over the plans and he'll, he has those right-of-way things printed up. See, I'm the one that's gonna have to go out and negotiate all that stuff, it isn't. So.
But I mean, like Tom's right, we, I think Tom and I need to probably meet with him and say, okay, this is what he's recommending and so this is what you're.
Oh, okay.
You know, I mean, just to try to have an idea of where we're at for the number, how much land we need and all that kind of thing. So my question is, is that something we should meet at the same time? Will they be ready then?
Yeah, well, according to Scott, he said everything's ready to go. He just needs to explain to me what, what landowners are.
What times you're meeting?
He hasn't determined yet. I just said sometime Thursday morning would work the best for me and he thought that would work for him, so.
Well, I wouldn't mind being there.
Okay.
I mean, that way we can not have to, you meet and then all of a sudden we meet again.
Oh, sure.
My biggest concern, I think, Tom and I is making sure Sioux Valley's on board.
Okay.
Not having to move anything right now.
You know, Dick, he had a whole, he had enough, a roll of plans thick enough to choke a pretty big horse. I can't believe that there isn't drawings on there that shows us the tenth of an acre or acre and a tenth or whatever it is we're gonna need for right-of-way to purchase if that's our negotiation, that he couldn't at least have already shared with our committee. So I'm upset because I think we're a good two months behind on this project. And I think you better make sure there's plenty coals under their feet and keep the billows around and keep putting wind on those coals to keep them hot, because I think they need, you have to be, you have to be an outrider on this thing and almost check with them daily to make sure that they're getting this thing done, because we are way behind.
I don't think that's his job, I think that's ours.
Well, it can be ours and I think we're trying to make it straight.
And I have no problem checking with them frequently.
Okay, well, we got the committee to do that, but I want you guys to keep checking with them, because we're behind. It's all Ryan's fault. We're looking at bidding deadlines, we're looking at lost opportunities from the bids, from a bid standpoint.
That's right.
I mean, their fees are gonna get real expensive if we end up spending another $100,000 on that road because we lost the opportune time to get the bids in.
Dick, you know how many landowners we're talking about? Have you seen the last?
I don't, four for sure, I think, there were.
Four, five?
Yeah, it is in hundreds.
No.
And the other part of that is then, when you're talking to them, you should maybe ascertain what their in-kind contribution is going to be, whether it's land or gravel or clay, what their in-kind is, because I think that's on that letter, all of the players and their in-kind contributions.
Okay.
So if you need a copy of the letter, we can get that for you.
And the other thing is, we're working with those business people over there that are contributing to this project. And we need to be communicating with them the progress, because they're our partners in this whole thing.
Yep.
Remind me when we visit that Rick Egerbrand had no problem getting ahold of the railroad.
Getting ahold of who?
Getting ahold of the railroad.
No.
He said he didn't, had two names, but Rick reported in his deal that he's been visiting with the railroad, so we need to get his name, because they're answering the phone. So get that worked out.
Why don't you let us know on Thursday?
All right.
I'll send you an email and if it. And just maybe let him know that we'd like to stop in also and look at it.
Okay.
And then.
Maybe Stacy, I could make an appointment for one of the rooms up here and we could just, like 2:10 or, or did they wanna meet at?
Maybe out there's fine.
Out there?
We're gonna meet out there.
All right.
Before you leave, Stacy contacted for a tour. Do you have time for a tour? And does the 23rd afternoon work best? And maybe we can do this without a survey monkey to see if other people.
You bet.
Works for the other commissioners?
Yeah, Dick, how's progress on the building? Is that behind schedule?
Well, I, they say they can move forward quite rapidly, but I would say it's behind schedule. I mean, it's, they've been at it since the.
Is it necessary, is it necessary for this board to contact them and say that our payments have been prompt? We would like, we would like.
I, I don't know, they've got an October 1st completion date and I think they're very well aware of that, that they'll be held to that, because there's no reason why they're, they were delayed. And the other thing was, and that's the other problem with allowing such a large window of time when you bid a project, you hope to get more competitive bids because of allowing them more time. So you can't really penalize them or hold them accountable for taking advantage of that window of time, as long as they get done when they're supposed to and they'll, they've got a penalty for every day they're late not getting done. You get back to where, you know, when we put it together, if we would've told them we wanted it June 1st completion date, you know, we don't know what it would've been, it's all, you know.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that too, but I thought if they were getting grossly behind and we were gonna end up, because you've got moving dates, you've got stuff, you need to prepare for the winter.
You bet, you bet.
I'm assuming when they go, they'll try to get it wrapped up before they go into the penalty phase.
Yeah, and they've got, you know, the insulation is there and they're probably be putting that in this week and the tin will go real fast, I mean, that's a piece of cake. And then once they get done, they'll have the floor to do, but there again, with the building up, it ain't gonna impede anything, weather ain't gonna impede anything as far as getting the concrete and stuff done, so I guess you gotta kinda trust people a little bit that they're.
The only thing I see with this project, I mean, we've had a lot of projects that have gotten behind because of weather and conditions like that, but there was a lot of days, when I go back in that area quite a bit, there was a lot of days where nothing done.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, there was just dead days that, so it's, it's just that they weren't there.
Weeks at a time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's no excuse for.
I think, I think to let them know our tolerance is gonna be a little less on this completion date, because it wasn't weather-related, it wasn't material-related, it was.
Exactly.
The jobs.
Quite, I guess back to Tom's question about that, the day here and stuff too, I guess I was thinking, you know, that we would be, we'd wanna tour that building before it's, or after it's done, I guess. So I was thinking in October.
Oh, sure.
Tour type of day too. And then I don't know how much on your road projects and stuff like that, you know, if we're gonna take the tour of the county to look at the projects and the things that will be done, will you be mostly finished with those here or?
Oh, yeah, the road projects are done now, except for a couple small ones that we would like to get Boz to address, but they're not big. I mean, the other big ones are done and same way with the building project, you know, they'll be real close, you won't get to see the garage doors go up and down probably, but I mean, it's, it's close. But I certainly don't mind delaying it if you wanna wait till, you know, the end of October would be fine.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'd like to see this finished product.
Okay.
You know, October, we go out there and see a building that's, you can't walk in because they're pouring concrete and all that stuff.
So the road tour and everything's gonna be delayed?
Well, I don't know, I just, that's what my thoughts were, I guess, was to move it into October sometime, doesn't have to be the end.
Yeah. Well, we'll see how things are on the 23rd and I'll just let you know and you can think it through, but anytime in October before the snow flies or whatever, when they're getting done, anytime after October 1st, hopefully, we could do it. So.
Ryan would like it after the pheasant opener and he'd like, and he'd like to have the door signed.
Yeah. So.
We'll put Tom in the middle so he can't run.
There you go, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Dick.
You bet.
Yeah. See, I think we covered our departments. So at this time, Abby, Deputy State's Attorney?
Did we do this one?
Did I miss one?
Finance.
Oh. Regular, we got one left.
We didn't do surplus property.
No, we haven't finished.
We went too fast.
Yeah, finance officers report.
Yeah. Well, I go ahead, Vicki up here, did you have anything to add, Stace, from finance?
Just the items that were on my report that I had in your pack. I think we covered all of them except, I think at last week, somebody had asked about the roof repairs at the County Resource Center. That was budgeted back in 2013 for that, so we'll have to do a supplemental budget hearing whenever we get those repairs done, whether it's this year or if we're gonna wait another year, but we'll have to do that at that time.
All ready? Yes, I didn't even have it checked off, but I jumped over. Action to declare item surplus to be disposed of a public auction and Chair would entertain a motion for discussion.
So.
Falcon, second by Krogman. Stacy, did you have any more? One of the topics of question that we had was the Brookings Health System asking about a couple four-wheelers. I'd done some checking with one of their board members and they would use them for events such as rodeos, outdoor sporting events, things like that, where they're called upon to get out into, i.e. arena or a field and oftentimes in different kinds of conditions. And I guess, I didn't, these didn't look like the gator-type thing that you would use for something like that, so.
I've visited with Dwayne Thompson and he said, after I gave him more of the specifics on both machines, they're not interested in them anymore.
Very good, that's right. Anything else? Any other things you wanna add, Stacy?
No, we're, the motion will say all of the different ways, whether it's surplus or sealed bid.
Yep.
Or transfers, because that's, there's different items on the list that will be disposed of at all of those various ways, but the things that are highlighted on the list actually won't get surplus. Those are the items that other county departments took from other, from other county departments to use themselves. But the rest will all be advertised then, except for some of the highway. I think there were some highway items that were going to get disposed of by sealed bid and a couple items that had been traded in already, so.
Okay.
That clock, we could maybe take it here. Does that clock have the right time?
I don't have to ask that.
Where is all this stuff stored? When's the last time we did one of these? Is this pretty common to have? I don't.
We had, we didn't, we did not have a sale last year. So 2012 was the last time we've had a sale, but this is a pretty average list, so. It was big in 2012, after we moved to this building, there was a lot more, I believe, but, so. And it's just being stored wherever people are storing it and then the day before the sale, everything will get moved out to the parking lot at Swiftel.
Any other questions? Call or roll.
Miller?
Hi.
Falcon?
Hi.
Wyeth?
Hi.
Krogman?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
I think maybe I can call Abby.
I have nothing to report anyway.
Okay.
After all that extra time.
All that extra. Commissioner reports and discussion. Some of ours, Tom, would kinda fit into the work session and some of the things. Did you have anything else over and above that? Stuff we've been doing on a daily meeting you were at, all of us were at? You know, the interviews, so I have nothing outside of the other work session things and so I'll wait till then. Okay, Ryan?
I had a hospital board meeting on the 28th and had a presentation from Ida Bailey about, you know, they have their master plan of expansion and just kinda gave them a framework to see what they could do financially for their, what capabilities they have to take on debt, different stuff like that. So that was interesting there, they had a nice, except they have a nice framework to be able to work with, where they can punch numbers in and to see what kind of, except that they can handle and offer projections and different things like that. Again, they'll tie in a lot with the city, with their debt capacity and that kind of stuff too, so that was the majority of the presentation, so. So I have.
Thanks, Ryan. Stephanie?
August 27th, I attended the press conference welcoming the new discovery benefits to Brookings, the 28th. We did our interviews and we had a domestic abuse meeting where we had a training on how to be a proactive board member, which is applicable to almost any board.
Okay, Dennis?
Okay. And other than what we'll be covering, I did too, I attended the press conference and that was kinda interesting. Mr. Wyeth was there along with Commissioner Miller. And it's always good to have those kinds of things happening in your community. And of course, the interviews, took part in those. And then, just like Commissioner Wyeth, that's just been kind of a daily thing from fixing copiers to what have you. And once again, staff has been very good to work with and a lot of communication. So with that, does anybody have anything else before we move into our?
So, uh, with that, uh, does anybody have anything else before we move into our work session? Be for the good of the order. If not, we'll adjourn the meeting and we'll, if you wanna have a little break, a little bathroom break and then we'll go on to our work session.